I'd like to call to order the city of Dunellen council meeting is September 12th, 2022. It is now 5:32 PM. And Jean, please rise for the pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone in attendance that would like to give a presentation or some words of thanks or thoughts of wisdom?
I'll do it.
All right. Brought up to the podium.
I guess the mic is on. Let's bow heads. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come to assemble. We thank you to God for allowing us to live in a country that has a representative democracy. We thank you, our God, for those elected officials who are here, give them wisdom, guidance, and understanding in the decisions that they make, and that the decisions that they make be just for all of those that they've been elected to govern. We ask these prayers in thy name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sodom, we are now ready for roll call.
Mayor White.
President.
Lysin Air Hand Charter.
Here.
Notchland Williams.
Here.
Notchland Tunnies.
Here.
Notchland CD. We did try to find those. Um, but we're going to get a call back. Troy Slidere, Call of Work Manager.
Here.
Dennis C. Science Officer.
Here.
Jordan Dennis, Community Development Manager.
Here.
Julie Danowski, Records Clerk.
Here.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Lieutenant Yawes.
Here.
City Attorney Andrew Henn.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website, City Hall Bulletin Board, on Thursday, September 8th, 2022, and amended on September 12th to add to item number six and seven.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sodom. Appreciate it. Just want to thank everyone for coming to this month's council meeting. You're about ready to witness your city government at work, and we embrace your attendance and your participation. Couple of things I would like to go over as far as the conduct of the meeting. If you have a ringing device or something that may ring during the meeting, this is a reminder, please turn it off. If you have intent to speak, if you have signed up, you will be asked to speak in order first. If you haven't signed up, you still will be asked and given opportunity to speak after those that have signed up have spoken. If you do decide to speak, when you come to the microphone, please take note that everything you say is being recorded. It is public record. It can be retrieved by anybody by request. So think about what you're saying and how you're saying it, because it becomes permanent record for anybody, anywhere, who could ask for a copy of what you say. So when you speak, please give your name and address in the microphone. Speak in the microphone, direct your comments toward council. One thing I would like to say is, when you speak, please always be respectful to council and the staff. Believe me, we are all doing the best we can. We're not always perfect, but we strive to be. Any comments that are taken to be personal, personal or attacking and individual, my obligation as a chair is to prevent that and to not allow the council or any members of staff to be ridiculed, criticized unjustly, or made to feel poor. In weight to that, we promise to you that when you speak, we're not only appreciative of what you say, we're respectful of it, and we embrace it, and we like to hear what you say. One thing I would like to say to council before we get into some of the comments is, when we have public comment, the task of council is to listen to the comments, not to interact with the individual making the comment. If we have a question or we need clarification, we can ask that individual for clarification. But during the public comment, our job is to listen to the comments, not to rebut it or disagree with it or make comments, so that we can do that after public comments are totally done. So please keep that in mind, that public comment is not the time for a debate, it's time for us to listen and go to the next person. Okay, with that said, council, do we have any comments regarding the agenda as it is posted?
No, sir.
No comments? No comments. Okay. If you're following us, we're at the bottom, near the bottom of the first page, it's the public comment. On non-agenda items, what this simply means is if you look through the agenda, you will see we have 20-something items listed. So anybody that thinks this is going to be a one-hour meeting, it ain't going to be a one-hour meeting. I've always said, if you, if you put 10 minutes on each agenda item, which is reasonable, 20 times 10 is 200 minutes divided by 60, that means the meeting is pretty much guaranteed to be over three hours. So it's almost that way. So if you want to speak, you come up, you have your three minutes. We begin by, you can speak to non-agenda items. That means anything you want to speak to that's not on this agenda, this will be the time to do it. Something new, something different, something old. If you want to speak to something that's on the agenda, you have to wait till that agenda item, we come to it, and at that time, I will ask for public comment. So you actually have several times during this meeting to speak if you so choose. So with that said, we'll begin with the public comments on non-agenda items. Ms. Sodom, do we have anybody signed up for that?
Yes, sir. Rodney Long.
Mr. Long, welcome. Name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My address is 1712 Northeast Waldo Road, Gainesville, Florida. And I am Rodney Long. I am a candidate for the newly created Florida Senate Seat District Nine. There is no incumbent in this seat. It was just created by the legislature. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a resident of Gainesville, La Crosse County. I'm married to my lovely wife, Carol, over 35 years. We have five adult children, 11 grandchildren, two great-grandchildren, one great-grandchild just born two days ago. We have small, we're small business owners, and I am also on the ministerial staff at my church, Child of Blessing Harvest Center. A little bit about my elected office experience, I've had the opportunity to serve in public office on two separate occasions. I served on the Gainesville City Commission, served one term as mayor. I was very involved in the Florida League of Cities, the National League of Cities. I was elected to the La Crosse County Commission for three terms, had the opportunity to serve as Chair of the Board for two terms. My colleagues at the Florida Association of Counties, they elected me to be President of the Florida Association of Counties on two terms. I was also involved in the National Association of Counties, where I was selected by my colleagues there to visit the White House in 2011 to speak on counties' issues with President Obama. Just a couple of issues I'd like to share with you that's important to me. Being a former elected official, I am very, very concerned and very, very supportive of local government home room authority. My opponent does not support that. He says that local government is under the jurisdiction of the state of Florida because they're sovereign, so local government basically doesn't have any authority. I disagree with that, because you all are elected by the people, and local government is the closest government to people. So as your next state senator, I will oppose any legislation that tries to preempt local government, any cost shifts to local government, or anything along those lines. One other issue that's very important to me, and I know is very important to you, and I support your resolution, and I stand in solidarity with you, and that is, I oppose the toll road that's being proposed in Marion County. My opponent voted for the funding, and if you send him to Tallahassee, he will also support the funding for the building and construction of this toll road. I am opposed to it not only in this particular county, but in Levy County, where I'm also running to represent that. So that's a little bit about me. I love to give you my personal cell phone number, so I love to hear from you, and anyone in the public can call me as well. My personal cell phone number is 352-494-6099. Again, that's 352-494-6099. And you were given some information. I'd love for you to visit my website, it's www.rodneylongfloridassenad district nine dot com. You can go on my website, you can leave comments, or you can always get in contact with me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council for allowing me to come to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. We're both in, and good luck.
Thank you.
Ms. Sodom?
Porter.
Mr. Porter.
I'm Dave Porter at 11835 East Blue Cove Drive in Dunellen. I left everyone a gift basket, a book on vacation rentals. I promised you at the workshop that I would help with the effort that we've been working on to educate you on vacation rentals. It's a very technical issue, and it will be coming to the council soon. I think the planning commission is a special workshop on the 19th, and hopefully soon thereafter, it'll be going to the council. So a couple of things that, in the book, I've highlighted some of the, some of the more significant things to shorten your, your reading, but with an unregulated vacation rental, I presented to you some of the effects of it. So a business in a neighborhood that has 10 to 15 cars parked is not in the nature of the neighborhood. Taking a, a standard home and packing people into it has a lot of negative effects. We have some homes in Dunellen that set limits, a three-bedroom home that advertises has 10 beds and sleeps 15 people. So you can kind of imagine what that looks like, and it's all for $249. So, so that's pretty cheap lodging. So in this book, it should clearly show that vacation rentals are a business highly regulated by the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation, who regulates CPAs, who regulates your barber, restaurants, hotels, rent, uh, real estate, almost everything. So they have a lot of regulations and rules for vacation rentals, but the state does not inspect them. The state leaves it up to the local municipality. So you'll also see in there that I compared our ordinance, that the staff has done an excellent job, our proposed ordinance, is very consistent with most other cities. So you'll see section by section how we compare to other cities, and it's not a surprise that it's very close, because other cities go with the other, same regulation. I'll also show you that vacation rentals really have a negative impact on income to the city. So a lot of people say you get a lot of money from, from vacation rentals. That's not the case, because they're not permanent residents, and you'll kind of, you'll kind of see how that fares. So not only do they, they're a lot, they're owned from people outside the city, so those people don't vote, and so they don't contribute as much as local residents. So I appreciate your time, and happy reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Ms. Sodom?
I do not have anyone else signed up to speak on non-agenda items that we need.
Okay. Everyone that has signed up, there's two. Anyone else in the audience? Yes, Art?
Yeah, Art Jones, 12163 Palmetto Way, here in Dunellen. Great to see everybody tonight. Works hard on the river, and as you know, we're out there breaking out that hydrilla, and we've applied for some grants, and we got some really good news. We got a grant awarded on Friday of $150,000. So that's exactly what we needed to push us over the limit to make our goal of getting a money to do this technical survey, so that that allows us to get the permits in place. And the good thing about that is that now, once we've got, now that we've got this grant, we've also applied for two other grants. One of them through the DEP for $2 million, and another one through the Restore Act funding, which is the BP Restore Act money for $1.5 million. So this grant that we just got on Friday is going to help us move up the ladder in these other grants. They assign points and things to grants, and it's like, okay, bonus, 20 points, you know, you've already got the, the permits and everything ready to go. So I'm very excited about that, and I'm going to start some weekly meetings, because this means it's really moving forward. So I'm renting the hall up there in Blue Cove at the church there. They have a beautiful community center there in Blue Cove, and our first meeting is going to be this coming Wednesday night. And we're having a speaker that's going to talk about otters, and I would love to invite the city council, I know you have like sunshine rules and things like that, but so instead, what we're going to do is, we're going to have a weekly meeting, and so we're having, the first speaker's going to be someone talking about the otters, and then maybe the next meeting, maybe we could ask the mayor to be the guest speaker, and then the next meeting, maybe the vice mayor, and down, on down the line, and get different people coming and talk to us about things. So I'm very excited. We're going to, you know, at the meeting, we want to talk about, maybe having an otter festival coming up. You know, we have a lot of festivals in town, and, you know, maybe something like that with otters, get some statues, and work with the chamber on that, and going to see if we can find someone to reach out to, where we can find some otters, maybe some baby otters or something, bring them up for it. So I'm pretty excited about it, and people in the audience that aren't politicians, welcome to come to this meeting. It's at 7 o'clock. We've got it scheduled from 7 to 9, and it's at the Episcopal Church, the community center right across there in Blue Cove. So we're going to have it videotaped, so if council members can't see it, we're going to get it videotaped and get it up on our website, so you can see it on YouTube. So pretty exciting. So that's why I'm here, and I can't stay the whole meeting, because I got so many things to do all of a sudden, so, but thanks for all of your support in the past. You know, the council's support was very helpful in getting these grants started, and got a meeting with the county on Friday, so we're going to be talking to them about their support and how they can do to help too.
May I, if I can just ask you one question?
Sure.
Maybe you include the audience, and it may not be familiar with what you're talking about. The grant you just received, $150,000, is the money that you needed in order to get the survey done, so you could then, after that's done, you could go forward with the project and trying to get the big money for the grants, correct?
Correct.
So that's amazing, because you just, seemingly, it seemed like it was two months ago when you first walked in here, and gave us your idea, and 60 days later, you've already come up with a $150,000 grant. That's, that's quite exciting today. That's, that's phenomenal.
Yes, and, and, and on top of that, we'd be happy to help the city with some other grants, and I invited Troy to the meeting Wednesday, and I don't know if he can make it or not, but I'd like to talk to him about getting a grant to replace some of the culverts that go into the river, some of the drainage, so we could get that taken care of for the city through a grant. Michelle, who is my project director, she and I, we've got some experience writing grants from Crystal River and those projects, and we can do them. We can do them, we know what to do.
Right, Art, thank you so much.
I saw that on WCJ, they knew, should they were listed grants, and one of them was Rainbow River.
That's right. That's right. That's it. Out of, out of like 900 applicants, we were one of the 250 that were chosen. Yes.
Hey, congratulations. I'm very excited for y'all, excited for, you know, what this potentially could do for us, but just, what you just offered right there is to help the city. That was part of that plan that we all worked so hard on, to get citizen involvement, to make positive changes, and to help us to, to do those kind of things. So I just wanted to thank you for reaching out to us and offering to help, so thank you.
Yeah, like I said, we started cleaning the beach up for the kids, and let's, you know, keep it going. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Art.
Okay.
Wonderful minutes. I hope the rest of the meeting goes just well.
All right. Sure.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Yes. How you doing, Paula?
Good. I, I really love coming here and talking to you guys. You make a great team of support people.
Name and address first.
Oh, Paula Coger. 11983 Palmetto Way, Dunellen, Florida. And I have here a brochure for the Community Talent Show that is going to be held October 8th at the Episcopal Church Auditorium, the same one Art was talking about, and I'm recruiting talented people, even if you're not really talented. If you're willing to get up and share yourself with this city and make it fun for us, really. We've got the little children from the karate school, we've got from the dance school, we've got Bill's son Jake. Yeah, and we have got Anita singing, and we've got David and I doing ballroom dancing, and what?
Flute.
Flute. Oh, yeah, we're going to play the flute in the singing bowl, which is awesome. And then I wanted to tell you that it's very exciting to be part of, I'm working with Patrick and Bonnie Walters to establish more of human services in, in the city. And I called the man at HUD, and I said, would you be willing to come and tell us how we could get HUD funds for this city? And you know what this man said? He said, HUD wants to give this city more than any other city. Yeah, I swear. And I said, okay, so the only thing we have to do is decide what we want and ask for it. At the first of the year, we can write grants, and my exquisite, perfect idea is that we not only, people are feeding the homeless, and I'm very grateful for that. However, I would like to feed their souls and their minds with some things that can get them off drugs and get them into happiness and whatever else they are willing to move into and out of homelessness. So I'm putting together a request for HUD that we establish a health center, a mental health center, you know, social services, what it takes, and I just wanted to make sure it's in the city's, you know, you're okay with it, and I don't want to be bringing in the world and you don't know about it. So if you know what I have to do to get approval for this from you, then let me know if there's anything I need to do. And I'm also willing to accept help to write the grant. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anybody got talent?
Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak? Yes.
My name is David Coger. I live at 11983 Palmetto Way. Yesterday, when Paul and I were on our way home, I noticed a car stopped right by the little retention area that's just before Palmetto Way on the right there, and I saw the guy doing this. And I says, oh, no, because recently, as I drove by there, I've noticed there's been a gator in the pond. And when I pulled over, the gator was actually coming out of the water, and the guy's still sitting there throwing him food, and the gator's coming closer and closer and closer. Now, I'm an ex-bridge engineer, and I did 35 miles of Interstate 75 across Alligator Alley. I lived with the gators for three and a half years. I can't tell you the number of dogs that I saw eaten by gators, because people would occasionally feed them, and they got used to people. They'd come out of the water and snatch their dogs off the leash, take them back in the water. So Troy, I'm going to ask you, if we can get you signed up, please do not feed the gators or nothing like that, and I guess it is time that, I'll ask the chief, who do I need to call, because this gator?
The gator was removed Sunday night.
Sunday night?
No longer with us.
Good enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Troy.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to let the council know that the county didn't put up two signs last week on Thursday afternoon.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, please. Good to see you.
Good evening. My name is Kami Stedman, 20077 Southwest 110th Street in Dunellen, Florida. I am the Director of the Boys and Girls Club, and our mission is to enable all young people, especially those that need us the most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. I'm here to support our local governments, to support our local leadership. I'm here to encourage the city of Dunellen, its citizens and its leaders to be involved in our youth, to have an impact on their future, and to provide a way for them to become enthusiastic about themselves and their community. I'm excited to hear about the Rainbow River Project. Hopefully, we can inspire some young people, which we do have a lot of teenagers, who need to be inspired as environmentalists, to take advantage of the activities and their environment and where they have grown and learned to love. I'm also excited about the talent show. You can count on the Boys and Girls Club, where our community members help us. And in addition to the comment made about HUD, it's not just drug addiction and substance abuse that we're concerned about, but we're also concerned about the poverty level of families who are actually trying to raise children, who cannot afford a mortgage or a loan and have a good history of credit. It wasn't until the past five years that I realized you have to build credit in order to have credit, and, you know, some people are very fortunate as, as young adults to be able to get that access. So for HUD to have an opportunity to develop here, we hope to be able to establish something for our families. Yes, Kami?
Yeah. I just thought of something.
So I'm excited to be here. I hope to stay as much at the meeting as I can. There's a lot of things in the agenda that hopefully we can be involved in. So thank you very much for your time and your service.
Thank you.
I just want to tell you more quick, there is a gentleman that's going to be coming to town and doing a work time and buyers class, so that might help some of your people that you work with, so they can get that, yeah, attention. I'll keep you posted, okay?
Thanks.
Thanks.
Anyone else in attendance that would like to speak? Tim. Don't, don't start removing, Tim.
That was last name. Water on the bridge. Tim Eske, 12140 Maple Street. What I'm bringing right now is what I see as a need for a project plan presentation standard. And what I'm going to use for example is, and only an example, is the downtown lighting project that's before the city council for approval here coming up soon. Right now, there's very few details for this light project. In order to make an informed, responsible decision for approval, a solid systematic plan needs to be developed. This needs to happen for all major projects. Details for this lighting project have changed from meeting to meeting, i.e. parts required costs. These details and others should be ironed out during the planning process prior to presenting and/or asking the council's approval. A systematic planning effort will greatly reduce the risk of cost overruns, unnecessary use of time, legal issues, and keep surprises to a minimum. I want to strongly communicate, I am all for the downtown area getting rehabilitated. However, I am completely against taxpayers' money being spent or a project being approved without going through a proper planning cycle, a plan that has been systematically thought out with proper due diligence. A plan starts with an idea or a need. Once approval, to explore the ideas given, a solid plan needs to be developed to present to the council. The planning steps are fairly simple, but again, what we're looking to do is create a standard for this, so people presenting the projects can check off the block, understand what they should be presenting to the council, so the council has enough information to make an informed decision. The idea, the idea is to be implemented is walk down at the implementation sites for practicality, to discover obstacles, contingency development, et cetera. After the walk down identifies the entire scope, research needs to be done to understand the legalities, liabilities, et cetera, of things like the requirements of a city replacing and taking over street lights from property owners. Example, are there different standards when a city takes them over than when a resident has them? Another example is if a couple lights are out, someone trips, gets hurt, is the city liable? All those things need to be ferreted out. All those things need to be ferreted out. Once the legal research has been completed and the risk understood, if considered appropriate to move forward, then property owners have to be contacted. The appropriate documentation needs to be completed, filed, recorded, and documented the terms for the city replacing and taking control of the lighting. This should all happen during a planning cycle to give the council enough information so they understand the decision that they're making. If the above research shows no showstoppers, then a detailed schedule is developed showing lighting descriptions, duration, resources, et cetera. And in simultaneity, we're developing a schedule, a parts and tooling list, where pricing is created, a contingency list with probable impacts of duration and costs, so we've done the homework to see what surprises that could happen. Second-order effects need to be evaluated. What would the future maintenance, replacement costs be? For example, with solar lighting, battery packs to solar ice, solar panels can be issues. After all the above is complete, an accurate budgetary estimate can then be completed. Now there is a plan that can be presented to the city planning commission or the council as applicable to make an informed decision.
We have to answer, you have to finish it up.
I'll skip everything right now. Solution recommendation, create a standard with the steps required for presenting a basic project. Slow down, get organized, develop basic standards. And I'm not only up here talking to it, this was my profession for 35 years. Troy does, Public Works does a fine job, Financial does a fine job, other departments are lacking. Parts presentation and a marketing presentation slides are not a plan. I would be glad to help and bring, offer files, et cetera, in the entire process of a very successful company to help with this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. Anyone else that would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom that has... Please make note that at 6:05, the public has had opportunity to speak to non-agenda items. Now we will move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda is just item number one, which is a proclamation. Does anyone in the public have a comment on the proclamation? Okay. All right.
I'm with the consent, the approval is presented.
We have a second?
Yes, sir.
It's approved. Okay, very good.
I think they have the presentation to give.
No. We go now to the item number... All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. So item number one was just passed. Now we go to number two, special present...
Oh, sorry. I think they, I think the ladies here from the Constitution...
We have them on the...
Oh, we have them on the... Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, my bad.
We'll get to you.
Thank you.
Now we're at number two, for those of you that have the agenda. You can also look up at our screen. Move it up one so everybody can see Ms. Odom where we're at. Maybe that'll help a little bit. Now we have a special presentation, which I'm delighted to make to Ms. Mary Ann Hilton. So Ms. Hilton, you can join me in the center of the room. I just stand over here. For those of you that don't know, this is Mary Ann Hilton. And Mary Ann Hilton has spent many years in various capacities serving the city.
Keeping the wild up, I think, if we don't know.
Both as a city councilperson, I guess, a couple different times. Planning commission, you name it, volunteer. I'm sure those that will read about the history of Dunellen, they will probably see Ms. Hilton's name often in some of the chapters of Dunellen. So what the, a lot of pride I want to present to you from, this is a city council certificate of appreciation presented to Ms. Mary Ann Hilton in recognition of your heartfelt dedication to Dunellen community and its citizens. You are hereby commended for your exemplary service on the city planning commission for a total of more than 10 years over the past two decades. Your participation and resourceful insight regarding the dates and responsibilities of this essential body deserves generous praise. You are also applauded for stepping up to the plate and serving as an honorable city councilman. Your extension, extensive medical background proved invaluable in your compassion and detailed approach to the support of the city, city council and planning commission in their endeavors to improve the quality of life in Dunellen. This with heartfelt gratitude, pride, and appreciation for your generous service, enthusiasm, and commitment. From the city council, September 12th, 2022, signed by William P. White, Mayor, Valerie Henshaw, Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Anita Williams, Councilwoman Jan Kovach, Councilwoman Louise Kennedy, with the official seal with this man, Anita Odom, verifying. Congratulations.
I can't think of it. I'm not interested, because I know it all, know that. And I hope to be able to continue to serve the city for as long as I'm able to get up and walk the main street of the city. So places are very...
Ms. Odom, we have another proclamation, but you have the list of people that have come up?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna call them up by name and they can...
I'm gonna call up Mrs. Barbara Belter. She is the regent of the Rainbow River Chapter of D.A.R. And she would introduce...
We didn't introduce anybody else. Thank you. We have Mary Stimson, who was vice regent. Come on up. Captain Messina, who was our chapter chaplain. Ross Simpson, who is our chapter recording secretary. And Ms. Priscilla Grandletter, who's in our, our sales committee, is a member. And there's my husband. We call them Hodars, husband of D.A.R. They do a lot of work.
Okay, we're gonna have...
Thank you, sir.
Do you hold this? Ms. Odom, are you gonna read this?
If you would like to.
Yes, please do.
Okay. Proclamation, P.R.O., 2022-11, Constitution Week, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and our republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2022, marks the 235th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And whereas the Rainbow River Chapter, National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, is locally sponsoring Constitution Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the city council of the city of Dunellen, Florida, does hereby recognize the week of September 17th through 23 as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Passed and proclaimed this 12th day of September, 2022.
Very good.
Thank you. Very good. And Mayor, I would like to give you two of our posters for Constitution Week. Maybe you put one up in here and one in the police station, I don't know, but we do sponsor that. And anybody who wants to contact the Rainbow River Chapter for membership, please do. We have rainbowriver.diar.org, just right on the thing.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me shake everybody's head.
Thank you, ladies, for coming today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, for those of you that are following, we just took care of item number two and item number three. We are now at item number four, which is our department heads report. Ms. Odom, you can choose the department heads and the order you feel best.
What do you have, Troy? Love your name.
Counsel, I have no major updates from the last week. I just wanna remind you one more time, the county did get those signs up for no feeding the alligators, just the D.R.A. And other than that, counsel, I just wanna give you a heads up about our family. We have another grandchild expected within the next two to three weeks. So if I'm out for a couple of days, you'll know why.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Odom?
Doritina, do you have anything? Yes, I do. I just wanted to report that I had 42 permits this past month. Both of them were commercial, 20 were residential. And we had a new business come into town. It's called Pro Vista Diagnostics. They are located at 20372 East 10th Avenue. And they started on the 1st of the month. And that would be all for me.
Thank you. Ms. Odom?
I just wanted to report to counsel, I spoke to State Park, the vendor for the vote, proposed vote launch program here at the city, and I talked to them about their cameras, their camera system. The cameras detect motion and focus on the license plate and surrounding metal, which affords the officer or whoever is looking at the video, a full view of the plate and enough of the vehicle to typically identify the DNA of the vehicle. In other words, they'll know if it's a Ford or Dodge, excuse me, the approximate year. The majority of the information and focuses on the vehicle and trailer, if a trailer is present, the license plates. The information is available through a free mobile application called Lock Enforcer, and it provides the officer the ability to enter license plate into the phone, and the plate will come up as paid. A violation, it's not paid with maybe a grace period of council's choice, or not paid and in violation. So at touch of a button, the officers can tell who's obeying the law and who isn't. So, and all this is at no charge to the city. Now, State Park can issue citations, or that can be up to our officers. Again, these are details that will need to be worked out once, you know, a draft ordinance is brought forward and these are discussed. So with counsel approval, I'd like to talk to State Park about maybe preparing a draft agreement, recognizing this in several months before the city would even, you know, enter into something because of our old process.
May I ask?
Yes.
Mr. Hand, so I saw your eyes go up when you were thinking about if we, if the city did the fines or if the other company did, is there a way that you think would be better than others?
I think the best thing to do would be to look at the city's neighbors that have implemented the program and see how they're doing it. Because I know the city did have a red light experiment, there are certain evidentiary standards that need to be satisfied, and that has an enabling law. And this point in particular doesn't. So as far as the evidence go, we just need to make sure whatever other communities are doing meet those Florida standards that don't have additional protections, that's all. I'm just not quite sure how it works, and so we'd wanna, that's something we would want to know.
Chief, do you have any?
Yeah.
I like that it's they can look, you know, put...
And I did say this to the chief. Yes, but I do not like the companies sending out citations. If they have a way, they do not have a way, but they're, if they disagree with the citation. But with us, we write the citation. If they have a disagreement, they go through the court system. So I don't think...
It's just, it's just an option that if we want to...
Do not agree with the option.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, very good. Ms. Odom?
I believe that's it. Ms. Chief, does anything more to say?
Okay, we are now finished with department heads reports. That's number four. We are moving to number five, which is the agreement 2022-28 with Kimley Horn, IPO 103 conceptual plan of police facility. Do we have any, do you have anything to add to that before we have public comment?
I believe Chief would like to speak to that.
What's up, sir?
Chief, did you want to speak to number five?
Yeah, I guess, I think it ought to be postponed. And I don't think there's enough information now. So until we get enough more information, we need to postpone.
Ms. Sir?
Chief, say it. Chief.
Just a quick question. So what is it that, I mean, I know we need to get your input and get that, so what is it that you need from us to get it to go forward?
And that's about all I got to say.
Well, it seems, it seems to, Chief, me reading the agreement, it seems like the footprint that we present is the footprint that they're going to do their conceptual design on. And if we change our footprint significantly, it will pretty much negate that design and we'll have to redo it. So I think the question is, we, we don't, counsel, I know, does not totally know what the footprint design is, so we don't even know what to tell Kimley Horn, how to, how to put it together. Whether your building's 4,000, 5,000, 6,000, whether it's rectangle, whether it's absolute square, they're gonna need to know these sort of things, so when they put their parking and whatever in. So I think that's why I'm understanding what you're saying, needing more information. But the information we need is gonna have a lot to do with what you give us.
I agree.
Now, counsel, what we could consider is allocating the $8,500 off to the side contingent upon us being provided with the footprints that were agreeable to, we can do it that way, or we can just simply postpone it to another time. So we could skin the caddy the way we want to do that.
I mean, if Chief's asking us to postpone it for the time being, that's fine. I think that $8,500, like we had discussed last Wednesday, is, could be part of that 600, something thousand that we are considering putting aside for the police department, trying to get grants and such. So I think that's where, if we're gonna do anything, that's where, you know, and we could add even a, so I think that's what we should do, if that's a little...
Well, Chief, Chief, are you okay with just taking it off the agenda and postponing it to...
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel, is everybody in agreement with that? Yep?
I'd just like to see something built for, you know, my great-grandchildren are sitting up there.
Well, we, these, these are the steps that need to be taken, and we're finally getting the roadmap we need. This is part of the process. All right, number five has been discussed, or counsel has taken no action on number five. It will be re-discussed to a later date. Now we go to number six, which is the West Pennsylvania Solar Lighting Picture. Now we go to number six, which is the West Pennsylvania solar lighting picture. Georgina or Mandy, do you have anything briefly to add to that before we have public comment?
Yes, I will let Georgina speak to that.
And all I have to say pretty much is, as per the last presentation of the conceptual plan, staff is requesting your approval to accept one of the two quotes that was provided. One being the gamma sonic solar lighting for $15,120, which will have 24 fixtures with their posts. As you can see, the other one came out to about $25,632. It's a lot higher. And this does not include the removal of the existing fixtures or the, or the cancellation of that electrical outlet that's there right now. We have received letters from, from the residents. We're only missing probably two of them requesting for us to do this. And they're giving us permission to go ahead and remove the existing lights and putting in new lighting fixtures. The installation of the lighting fixtures is very, very easy. It shouldn't take more than probably half an hour per light, or something like that. And they will provide all the instructions that are necessary to install, and our staff can do that. So it is our recommendation that we approve. As per procurement policy, we've received the two quotes, and now it's on when you're...
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Public comment now on number five. If anybody has signed up, anybody signed up for number five, Mandy?
No.
Okay, anybody in the audience that would like to speak to number five? It's actually, I'm sorry, it's number six. Item number six.
Do we know what the total cost for this project is going to be? We've got parts here. We've got a verbal that it's going to be a half hour per light, but...
I'm sorry, were you asking me a question?
Yes. Do we know what the total cost, we know what the parts cost is, but do we know what the total cost is going to be for the entire project?
To invest, by my knowledge, that has not been given to counsel yet.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else that would like to speak to agenda item number six? Okay, counsel, any, any comments? Or actually, we can make a motion in a second and then have comments.
Yeah, I move that the, where am I?
Number six would be...
So I move that we look at accepting gamma sonic solar lighting, 24 posts and lumens for a cost of $15,120.
We have a second.
I'll send a second.
Okay, keep in mind, a motion in a second is just what's necessary to open it for discussion. So this is not a vote for approval or disapproval. Okay, Ms. Covitch, do you have any comments?
I'd just like to comment that this installation of lights along our historic district is something that was addressed during the infrastructure historic district street inventory done by MetCap. It's probably one of the only thing I liked about this study. Also, it's also addressed during the St. Lee Van Allen asset inventory that was done here four years ago, improving Pennsylvania Avenue through the historic district. It was something, of course, not only our businessmen, business owners, shop operators, restaurants, was obviously pushing counsel to move on and make some infrastructure improvements, but also the general public and our visitors. These kind of projects impress people greatly. And keep them here, think of us as a really classy place to come and visit and spend their money.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
If the money is allocated for it, and it was possible, and that's what we're supposed to use it for, I'm long for it.
What, Vice Mayor?
Yes. And Troy, are you gone over this project with Georgina? Do you have any concerns, any, I mean, you've already said that your staff can install them, that's what you said Wednesday. And then I guess Duke Energy is still having to be, or has been contacted about disconnecting the electric from there?
It won't be Duke Energy, it'll be the individual businesses that have power running to the pre-existing fixtures now. That's the letter that Georgina was referring to. She's received permission from them for the city to hire an electrician to go in and do the disconnect from the businesses. And once we do that, then the installation should fairly be, you know, be very simple. Taking down the old fixture. But we still have to look through some of the challenges as far as what are we doing with the old ones? Who takes possession of them, and what are they getting disposed of? But other than that, you know, I'm pretty sure once we get a sample in to see the luminance of the, the light fixtures and make sure that quality is what we want, I don't see it taking very long to install.
So have we talked to an electrician yet? Sorry.
I will be. I have not, not specifically yet, but no. That is a project that's on the list to talk to. I have a few questions on this. Knowing a little bit about lighting, an expert that I do like lights, as everyone knows, 24 luminous is not very strong. That basic...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I need to correct that, that 24 is the amount of lighting fixtures.
24 luminous?
Lighting fixtures.
With posts. Okay, do you happen to know what the luminous of the lighting fixtures are in comparison with what's out there?
I didn't provide that to you, that was provided in the presentation as part of the brochure, but I can definitely send that over to you again.
Because what's out there right now is two lights, and we're going to replace it with one solar light, right? Is anyone on staff, Troy, have you ever seen these particular lights somewhere? And do you have an opinion how they look at night and?
I have seen it. I have seen it at the Main Street conference. I saw the actual fixture. It's, it's a lot bigger in size than the ones that we currently have. The ones we have are two. This one is one, but it covers the entire area. So it looks really nice, it's very historic in nature. Like the look, the looks of it, it's very historic. And they are, the, the poles are solid metal poles.
But you've seen pictures of it, you actually haven't seen...
I saw the actual lighting fixture.
You saw it?
At the conference, yes.
The conference? Okay. Troy, you haven't seen it yet.
I have not. I have not seen them lit up. But like I said, this is something that we can order in the first one, knowing that we're moving forward with the project. And if we have to make an adjustment or work with the company to get a brighter loom, then we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
So the, the question that was brought up by, by Tim and his public, there's a lot of public comment. There's a lot more to this than just simply buying 24 lights. You have the issue of removing ones that are currently there, disengaging them from the electric that they are currently hooked to, then the expense of that removal, and then the expense of the installation of it. I think it is a fair question to ask staff, on top of the $15,000, what would all that cost? If you cannot answer that, I would have to say we have some more homework to do. I don't know how counsel could approve this, not knowing what the additional expenses would be. I do remember counsel wrestled with these lights a couple of years ago to try to take possession of them, because we wanted the lights to be operative, and we did not want the owners to have the leeway of deciding whether to turn them on or not. So we actually investigated very thoroughly what it would take for us to take them over and for us to be in charge with the electricity. And what was reported to counsel is going to cost $80,000 to do that.
Plus a recurring cost of like $15,000 a year from Duke Energy contract.
It was going to take $80,000 to us to take possession of those lights and rewire them. So there, there may be some significant expenses to this. Who would, for the individual owner that owns these lights that are going to be replaced, who would be responsible for the cost of the rewiring? You know, you have to, you just can't pull the post out, you got, you have to, you have to pull the wires out safely. Who would pay for that?
According to the project, the city's going to be paying for that as part of the project. We're going to be working with an electrician, find out what it costs per unit to have disconnected, the power removed from it. And it would be at the city's expense to do that, based on, Georgina, correct me if I'm wrong, but based on the letter that was sent out or handed out, that...
The letter was brought in by the residents. They are agreeing to, to give us authority to go and remove the lighting. And the only extra expense to the $15,000 would be the expense of getting an electrician to disconnect the electrical outlet. And the removal of the lighting fixtures is going to be done by staff. And the re-insulation of the new fixtures is going to be done by staff. So there's no other expense.
My, my concern is, these lights may be perfect. They may look wonderful, and they may shine brightly, and maybe everything is supposed to be. But I, as one of the members of counsel, I have to know generally what the entire thing's going to cost. To just know that it's going to cost $15,000, and there's going to be some expense with these other things, but not having an idea what those expenses could be, and then committing to purchasing these before we know what it is. I think, I think counsel should be told, these lights are going to cost $15,000, and we're expecting an additional amount of money needed to remove, reconnect, install, and maintain these. I don't know how counsel could do their homework. I mean, how they could make a vote without this being provided to them.
I guess Troy, he needs to do some homework.
I will follow up with Georgina, beginning tomorrow afternoon. I have a busy schedule in the morning, but I'll start following up with her tomorrow afternoon and fill in the blanks and the questions that the counsel has.
Okay. Okay, with that said, everybody has discussed, we do have a motion on the floor to go forward with this. And if there's more discussion, we can have it, if we want to bring it to a vote for approval or not, we can do that now.
Ms. Ray, I would go ahead, and I'll remove my motion with the caveat that I'd like to put this back on for next month with further information. And just a food for thought, we might want to think about trying to, and Mr. Hand, this will be on you, I, probably Mandy, figuring out how we can, what's the word when we get rid of our stuff?
Surplus.
Surplus. Big word. And maybe be able to surplus those lamps that we currently have, and...
Those aren't our lamps, though. It's not ours.
But they're getting rid of them. That we're having to remove them and put them some, and the set, the owners of the lamps don't want them, because they don't have any place to put them, correct?
Well, they've given us the, the right to go in and remove them, but the lamps are still there.
Right, well, but if they want to, so are we just going to leave them at their site?
We'll make that a part of the follow-up to find out if the lamp owners want to retain ownership and possession of them, or if they need to be disposed of, or if they will donate them to the city so that we can surplus them, so therefore we can recover some of our costs. So there's three options that we can look into. We'll make sure that we follow through to find out what the best option is.
If we make $200, that's $200 that we can put back into our costs. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Georgina.
One last thing I would like to say, thank you Vice Mayor, we'll reschedule this, is I would really like to know where this exact lamp is being used, where? And if it's within a reasonable driving distance, there's something I would like to do. Because this is not just a commitment to the 24. This is actually a commitment to do everything eventually. So if this isn't right to begin with, then as we expand the lighting to other areas, we, we won't be satisfied with these lights. So these lights have to be correct, because this is going to be what we're going to tie into as we go forward. So I would appreciate where the, knowing where these lights may already be used, and it's not beyond me to go have lunch in that city and check the lights out.
That's very dark.
You might want to go at dinnertime, so you can...
And a food for thought, I mean, and again, how many of those lights are going to be here on City Hall property?
On City Hall property, there are three.
I wonder what the cost would be for three of them? Just food for thought.
We don't, we don't have to spend the money on just a sample. We can, if you direct me, I can have them come and do a little presentation and show you. Anyway, just food for thought. Thank you.
Or light for thought, I don't know.
Okay, very good. All right, we are now moving to item number seven. It's the City Hall digital sign. Again, let's give a little description of that, and then we'll have public comment on that.
And this is again, as per staff's presentation of last Wednesday, during the conceptual plan where we showed the digital signage at City Hall. We've received two quotes, one from Albright Signs for $34,995, and one from Jayvery Signs for $33,130. The difference in price is the, the resolution of the digital board and how, how much you can see from, from afar. So 7mm means that you're gonna only, you're gonna see it from, say, 60 feet away, as opposed to 10, where you're gonna be, be able to see the, the display about 100 feet away. So Albright Signs is the one we are recommending, even though it's a little bit above the other one, because they're giving us the options of the two, and we already know them from having other, other signage that we've seen in the area. And so that is staff recommendation. The software and onsite training is going to be available. There's going to be lifetime tech support being provided. Parts and labor will be guaranteed for a year. And the structure itself has a lifetime warranty. It will have an aluminum decorated base, and it will be mounted on steel poles, and it will have a concrete footer. The power is supplied by the city, and the location is wherever you instruct us to have it. There are two options, one at US Highway 41, but I understand there was a concern with, with the visibility and having people be distracted because of the digital signage, information being placed in there. And then the other option would be right where our current sign is. So that would be up to you all to decide if you want to have a digital sign and where you want to have it.
Okay, thank you, Georgina.
My pleasure.
All right, we are at number seven. We are now at public comment. Has anyone, Ms. Sodan, signed up to speak to item number seven?
No, sir.
Is anyone in the... Is anyone in attendance that would like to speak to item number seven? Tim?
Tim Inzke, 12140 Maple Street, Donnell. I had the same question as before. Do we know what the total cost of this project's going to be? We're going to have electrical, electrician support that's going to be required. Seems odd that we're going to, we don't know where our sign's going to go as, because of lack of planning rigor. Mr. Mayor, you presented pictures of the exact sign and if I understood your presentation correctly, you explained that it doesn't appear that from one's car, we're going to be able to read the entire sign, so people will still have to get out of their car and to read this. And with all the social media, the different internet networks, et cetera, et cetera, seems like everybody's can get their information from there. If it's sitting in front of the building here, I don't see many people actually getting use of the sign. And you also explained that if the daylight's just right, then it makes it even that much harder to read. So, I'm not sure, and I totally agree with the, should not go on 41. It's one of the busiest sections right out here that endangers, especially with the crosswalk that there is. So, thank you.
Just sort of while we're having discussions, is there any chance that you could retrieve those photos of the sign from this meeting? Okay. First, do we have a motion and a second? This is on the digital signs. Do we have a motion to your recommendation? Georgina, is the Albright Signs?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to go forward to purchase the Albright Sign for $34,995?
I have a motion for Albright Signs for discussion.
Well, you're just, yeah, you're making, you're making the motion. Do we have a second? Without a second, the motion, this dies. With a second, it creates discussion.
A second for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Ms. Williams. Okay, we have a motion, a second, which creates discussion and then creates a vote. We're going to look at those photos. Ms. Covage, do you have any questions, any comments?
I have a couple of comments. One is $33,000 is a large sum of money. I would rather see that money earmarked to instead continue making improvements on the streetscape of Pennsylvania Avenue or Historic District. Also, I was wondering, based on what happened Saturday night about how crazy people drive, what happens if somebody runs this $33,000 sign? Will the city have insurance on it? They will.
I think so.
And their car insurance.
And, and right. Okay. And also, again, I just don't see this as a great way to purvey information to the community about what's going on in your City Hall.
Sorry, no clap, please. Okay, Ms. Williams?
Like I said before, you know, sometimes I get confused about this stuff, but it's my understanding that if there's a plan, if money is allocated for it, you can only spend the money on that, then why not? What else can you do with it?
Well, I think the question is, you have the authority to decide whether or not to spend it on this. So, staff is asking, do you want to, do you think it's good business for the city to spend $34,000 here?
And probably not on 41, but I think it would be nice.
Okay, that's your comment. Vice Mayor?
I've never been a big digital fangirl. Yeah, that just came out right. And I will, although I do think it's a lot easier to read than, I mean, we go to the, I mean, if you want to go look at a sign that's digital, all we have to do is go up to the power pack over here in Tampa. You go by, a lot of churches nowadays have digital signs. So, I, they are easy to read during the day and during the night. That's not a problem. I don't find it flashing in the four apartments behind us. But in all honesty, I will agree with Mrs. Covage. I'd rather us take that $34,000 and apply it to the road scape with our solar lamps and that would hopefully be more than we would need for the electrician. I would like for us to do something different than the sign we have out there. I wish we would get the signs like we have made at our entrances that say, "The Melon welcomes you." I wish we would get these signs changed. I don't like that sign out there, it's ugly. But for right now, I think, I'm just not a bit, even our church was talking about doing a digital sign and I was not for that. So, it's nothing personal about, I just, I'm not a digital sign kind of girl. So...
Okay. Thank you. I'm looking at this right now and this is actually a mock-up of what the sign would look like. And this is how it would basically look if you were in a car driving toward the entrance of City Hall. And you can see, if you're driving, until you get right upon that sign, you're really not going to see it. And Ms. Odom, the photos I was hoping you would show were the actual photos where I was standing by the sign by the church, which actually showed really what it really looked like. But where I'm at with it is, I think there's some utility to it, certainly. But when the city is struggling to allocate dollars where we hit the bullseye, you know, you spend a thousand, you spend out $10,000, you're trying to make everything count. And we're short on money and we're trying to be wise on how we spend it, allocating 35, basically it's going to be 35 or more with the incidentals, maybe push 40. For something like this, it's just not high enough on the food chain for me to get behind it and push it. It's just, there's other things, other things we can do with 35 or $40,000.
And now those funds are CRA funds, those aren't general funds or capital funds. Correct, Jan?
Yes, what I thought.
So, Ms. Odom, were you able to...
And it's for advertisement, right?
I was trying to find that, I forget which meeting that was. Can we go ahead and call a vote?
That's okay. We can have a vote. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Council has had a discussion, a motion has been made to go forward and to purchase the signs from that company.
I found it, Jill.
Yeah, just show it.
It's in my email.
I mean, this is it, right here.
And it looks great. I have no qualms with it. They are...
See now, there, it gives you the size, signs with me standing next to it, gives you, this is exactly the dimensions of the sign that's being proposed. Now, you can see from where the car is parked and that's where the picture is taken from. When the sign has big, bold lettering, you can read it, but right here you see the smaller print, whatever. It's, you can't hardly read it. In the evening, it may be a little bit easier because of the darkness, but I think the sign itself would be very limited. It would just be most useful for bold lettering. Anything else to that, Mandy?
There were...
Yeah, no. There, there you can see the big lettering, you can see it, but when you try to read the smaller lettering underneath, it becomes a lot tougher to read. So, it's very limited. Okay, that's all I want to do. That's exactly the sign right there. That's it that we're talking about. So, we have a motion and a second. Discussion's over. All in favor?
What was the motion for?
To purchase it.
To accept. The first guy's saying it. Okay, sorry, I don't have it for you.
Whichever was Georgina's recommendation.
Georgina's recommendation. Albright, Albright, thank you.
So, the motion was made to accept and second it. So, all in favor of going forward and purchasing the sign?
Aye.
One? All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion, the motion fails three to one.
And again, I apologize for bringing this to us because that's what we asked you to do.
All right, we go to number eight, the Historic District Wayfinding Signage. Again, we need a little backup on this. Georgina?
Yes, and this is based on the presentation of the conceptual plan that was brought up to you all last week on wayfinding signage for just the West Pennsylvania Avenue. And I have two quotes as promised. One from Florida Sign Proposal. They are, they used to be Graffless, just so you know, but they changed their name. They recently sold to some other company called Florida Signs, but it's still under Graffless, one of Graffless' companies. I don't know if you recall, Graffless was the company that I initially brought in with information about wayfinding signage. They provided signage to Weston, City of Weston in South Florida. And so, they provided this quote for us. And then the second quote is from Custom Glass. This is the company that Ms. Covage kindly provided their name for us. And we went and visited them and they are, they're a smaller company, but they, they worked very diligently in trying to get this to, give us a better rating, rate on that. So, they provided us with a quote today for $30,566 for the signs that I displayed there, for stop signs. And I'm not going to read all that because you already know.
We see that.
I don't want to beat the horse, but pretty much it's going to, it's going to give us the signage for the, for that street alone. They do, Custom Glass does, they do have to self-contract for the decorative signage because they don't have the key or the manpower to do that, but they were able to have all that incorporated into their quote for $30,000 and change. So, staff is recommending that we use them as opposed to Graffless, being that their quote is a lot lower and they have already provided us with some signage and we already know the quality of their work.
Okay, so that's the, that's the description. Do we have public comment on item number eight? This is the Historic Wayfinding Signage. Any public comment? Tim?
Tim Inzke, 12140 Maple Street. My only question is, do we know who's installing it?
At this point, I have not been told that.
The signage isn't, is being installed by staff, by our staff.
By staff?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, we had the presentation, we've had, any other public comment? Okay, do we, do we have a motion on this recommendation?
I move, we approve Custom Glass for wayfinding signs that'll be paid out of CRA funding.
$30,566.
And nine cents.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
Second, the motion.
Okay, we have a second. That opens it up for discussion. So, we'll go back to you, Ms. Covage.
Just that, again, this is something that I think that our taxpayers, who are business owners, operators, and managers of the Historic District would like to have happen. And again, we've had two inventory studies about infrastructure enhancements of our Historic District and both of them mentioned that our current streets lack historic street lighting and that this would definitely be an improvement, definitely tell our visitors that we're upscale, we're up class, and this is just a start, a place to start with the enhancement of a major commercial business district within our city.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Williams?
I think this one will be great for the Historic District.
All right, Vice Mayor?
Since I've been in there now, it seems.
Yeah, I know, right? Thanks. And it's funny, I, somebody I've spoke with today outside of my office, which is right there in the Historic District in this area, that was one of their comments to me, excuse me, was that they were excited to be hearing that we were getting some upgrades to that road because that really is, that road is what kind of differentiates us in the state.
Trademark.
It's a trademark. Thank you, that was a big word. And so, as a business, and I happen to be talking to another business owner, and they were like, you know, if they go with this plan and they wanted the lights and they were excited about the signage, that they can really see how when we do a, like, we have our Boomtown Days, that's where everything goes, it's right there. We have the Art Festival, that's the road that they all go down. This will make it that historic section. And again, it's being paid for CRA funds. We cannot put those CRA funds into the infrastructures and the, so, you know, there's such a specific thing that we can do. And then with you working so hard to get Main Street here, that's just another, you know, feather in our cap with Main Street to start looking like a Main Street. So, I really don't see how we could go wrong with doing signage. I want to make sure that our staff does not get overworked putting up signs, putting up electric or luminaries and those types of things. So, maybe Georgina and Troy can get together on that. I'm sure you all have had some conversations and really make sure that everything is working smoothly. But, and I like that Custom Glasses from, whoever?
Yeah, and they're part of our Chamber of Association.
And they're part of our Chamber of Association. So, that is just our business owners who are taxpayers are getting some bang for their buck. The businesses will be highlighted and they will be paying for some of those little wayfinding signs. I'm not, we're not going to make a lot of money off of it, but it's something. And again, this is our busiest festival street. And if you just look like everybody else's festival street, eh, why, you know, so this will just help ramp us up with Main Street and such and so forth. So, I'm excited by seeing this.
Very good. Vice Mayor, you made a couple real good points.
Of course.
I wish you'd say that to me once in a while.
I do, yeah.
I'm waiting.
Hey, I can.
I'm still waiting. The idea that we're going to focus on that particular street, I think originally the plan was to put signs in, basically in a wider area, is that correct? So, we've condensed it to a smaller area, which kind of gives us a looksee before we make a total commitment on it. I think the idea of focusing on that road, which is the main thoroughfare to get to 40, there's cars going through there all the time. It's high volume. You have our events that are there. Question I would have is although we always are looking for the best deal price-wise, on this particular item, if there was a quality difference for $4,000, a noticeable quality difference... difference, I would lean toward quality because here again, we're building, whatever we put here is what we're planning to continue to do elsewhere. And we want everything to match. We don't want to do something and say, oh, that other one was actually better, so when we reorder, let's get the other one. And now you have two different colored shoes. Another thing I would like is a guarantee that if we're going to do part of it now, and let's say we're going to do it over a couple year period, that the same material could be purchased, you know, that's out of stock, we don't do that sign anymore or something like that, we're stuck with it. So, you know, I, I want that to be considered too, you know, that we, if we're going to tackle this again at the next budget and do another street or two, that those same signs are available. I like the idea rather than going all in, as the first plan was, and us all gulping like quarter of a million dollars. I hope, I think reducing it to this number and focus it in that area, I feel a lot more comfortable with it.
I'd like to comment on your comments?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm the one who initially brought Custom Glass here and how I found out about them was on my drives through Crystal River, I took notice of their signs and some of them are fairly new. And I called the city administrator, talked to the assistant city administrator, I believe his name is Fred, something like that. And he said, these are, these are the people that gave us the best deal and they presented, they created some great signs and they are custom signs. And also the Manatee Watch Group also contracted them. And all the signs that, around Kings Bay that have anything to do with the manatees are also made by Custom Glass.
So are these signs that Ms. Kovac is referring to, are these the same quality and the same type of signs that we're looking at?
That's what I, I spoke to Glenn, the owner, and I showed him exactly what it is that we wanted, the concept that we were interested in, and he said he could do that. I have not seen the signs personally, other than driving by Crystal River, but, I mean, I, I can attest to the Grafflex signs because I've seen those, but...
So if the question wasn't, we weren't considered, considering the $4,000 difference, we were just concerned about what's absolutely the best? Do you have any idea if the price wasn't a factor, which company you prefer based on quality?
If you're asking me, my personal opinion, I would go with Grafflex, just because I, I come from Weston and I know what the quality of their work is. But if Ms. Kovac knows the quality of Custom Glass, quality of work, then nothing would, I mean, I...
The question is, it's not Ms. Kovac to vouch for the quality. Staff is supposed to tell us what it is, so...
I understand, but I've done that many times.
I, I mean, you, we have, you have ordered the signs from them and you've been happy with their quality of work, correct?
Yes.
So that's, yeah. So that's, that's good for me, that you have ordered, they have provided you what you wanted, quality was good, and that's where that lies.
Troy, are you familiar with these signs either way, either company? Have you seen it? You had any involvement in this, any input? This seems like something you should kinda have your hands in a little bit.
I have not dealt with either company as far as these wayfinding signs or street signs. I do know that we've ordered signs with Custom Glass, but they're, the ones I've dealt with are temporary signs and you may locally just buy it from anybody. But I'll follow up with Georgina tomorrow and we will look at the DOT standards and permit requirements or installation requirements for these signs and make sure that the quality is what we need for the project. I think if Custom Glass is in sign making business, it's up to the council and Georgina's recommendation to go with the company you choose. I'll just make sure that we meet the DOT standards and installation standards when we go to do the install.
Well, I think the, the gap is, I mean, I'm for this, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to blow this up, is Georgina has seen the work of one company. She has not seen the work of another company. You have not seen...
Can you put your website up right now and look at signs?
Well, there's something about how things can look on a website and, yeah. And you yourself haven't seen really this particular thing of either company, correct?
No, on this particular project, I haven't been brought much in on the loop because it's a, it originally started as a full turnkey project where contractors are going to, you know, be bidding in on it and the installs the whole nine yards. But as things change, we're looking at these companies to provide us with materials. I have not seen the materials, so I can't vouch on either one either way.
I have something else to bring up. The company, Florida Sign Group, they're going to charge us for shipping those signs?
No, delivery is included.
I'm sorry?
Delivery is included in that price.
Delivery, yes. And they are located?
They are located in Pembroke Pines, I believe.
Pembroke Pines?
Florida. And the reason why I'm not familiar much about Custom Glass is because they are, they're subcontracting the actual decorated poles. So they're getting it from somewhere else. They're not preparing those poles.
Are they preparing the, the frame?
They're, they're doing the, the sign.
Just the sign, but they're not doing the frame?
But the framing comes from a subcontractor, which we, we're not familiar with, so...
Well, I think the question we'd have is, are we ordering what Ms. Kovac has seen in Crystal River? Is that, is that what we're getting? Are we getting something of that quality? I would hate to say, well, Crystal River actually bought the enhanced version. If you guys would have let us know you wanted the enhanced, we would have given it to you, but you didn't ask for it.
That's what I've been told.
So I would like to say, you know, if we're going to do this, let's make sure we know what we're getting.
That's what I've been told. I have not seen the sign, so I can't say I saw the sign.
So quick...
Yeah, sure.
So what you presented to the city council is what you presented to anyone who wanted to bid on this project?
That is correct.
So they knew that we wanted four-way sign, we wanted the glass with its curvy things, we want our logo over here or wherever it goes.
Right, the concept is the same for both companies.
And they're, and they're both offering us, and I'm just making up something, they're both offering us seven, you know, some kind of a sturdy post made out of seven weight aluminum, I'm just making something up. So those are the same details that they're apples to apples as far as the look, the material and the, how they're being enhanced.
Yes.
So that, I think that kinda answers your question right there.
Yeah, I just wanted...
And I've driven through Crystal River numerous times, so we don't have to take any day trips, or not trips. But we could and go look at the signs because we've all seen the signs when you drive through Chris River in the historic district, where we're going to go to a refreshing beverage place over there.
Okay, Jordi, we're going to go, we're going to make a vote on this, but one thing I would ask is to make a couple phone calls and express the concern that we would like an assurance that additional signs can be bought at a later date that are matching this. Ms. Kovac has brought out, you have brought out that we have a subcontract deal going out right here, so we all know how things can get a little different than what you thought.
Does Florida Signs actually build the signs, the poles themselves?
They do it at home, yeah.
Still poles, still poles.
You know, for instance, for instance, we get back with glass, is that the company's name? And we say, hey, we would like an additional 25 signs or posts. And they say, well, we can do the signs for you, but the business that was doing the posts are out of business, so we can't get you those posts anymore. You know, so that, you know where I'm going. This is just, this is a businessman thinking like a businessman.
Well, I mean, in Florida, Grafflex just sold to Florida Sign Company, so again, we could have ordered them and then Florida Sign might get belly up.
Well, could they, so...
Can I call a vote?
Yep. Okay, we've had a discussion on this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We go to number nine, travel expenses for education. Miss Odom, you want to get us up to date on that? Public comment?
Yes, sir. I did send an email out to all of you this afternoon, I'm not sure if you've had a chance to review that for the meeting tonight.
Amen.
But I did go over every policy that exists in our personnel manual that has something to do with travel reimbursement or education, reimbursement. Let me see if I can find it so I can... Basically, this is not a decision that I can make or not something that I can authorize because I don't have a policy to fall back on. Georgina is, we're, we're refunding her tuition for school based on our education fund policy. And in that policy, the education fund policy, travel is not an authorized expense. It specifically states in there that it's not. I review all the other policies with regard to training and travel. They repeatedly make reference to quote unquote official city business. And courses taken in accordance with the education fund policy, I don't believe would be considered official city business, especially because it was not identified as a condition of employment. It was the council's desire for her to obtain her degree in urban planning. So when we were negotiating our conditional offer of employment, Georgina met the minimum requirements for the job description because she has a degree in public administration, so therefore, that's why I say it wasn't a condition of employment. But because council wanted her to obtain that degree, we worked out a conditional offer where she accepted tuition reimbursement in lieu of higher salary. So for the, the plan that was created was she would, you know, if there was X number dollars in the budget for us to hire the planner that first year, that salary being paid to her, or that would have been paid to her, was reduced by what she estimated she was going to need for tuition. So I looked at the policies, I looked at the travel policy, training policy, and because everything points to official city business and we do not have a take-home vehicle policy and as Georgina had stated, she would need to drive the vehicle home at night. So if council were to authorize some sort of stipend for her travel, the only thing I could recommend is mileage reimbursement. The IRS rate is 62 and a half cents per mile if you choose to do that. And Andrew, I had asked him to look at this as well to make sure he didn't see any issues with it, so do you have any comments, Andrew?
I think the policy is very specific on travel, so it would have to be an amendment to the policy to allow for some sort of travel expenses.
To the education fund policy?
Yes.
Okay.
The IRS mileage rate does change, or it could change on that basis too.
Right, and it doesn't identify that in the manual. It just identifies it as, it would be reimbursed, mileage would be reimbursed at the current IRS rate. The current IRS rate just happens to be 62 and a half cents right now. So that would require a resolution. We'd have to bring a resolution back to you to amend the education fund policy to, if the council desires, to cover travel expenses for education that's not associated with something under one of those other policies that do provide for it.
Okay, before we go further, let's everybody know what the subject is and some of the pros and cons. Do we have any public comment on item number nine? Anyone want to make comment on that? Okay, nothing on Zoom? If I don't ask, Manny, let me know. Oh, do we have a handout?
Yeah, I, my only question is...
Oh, Ms. Hilton, you have to...
I'm sorry.
You have to come up.
Mary Ann Hilton, 12078, I'm going to report to Ellen, Florida. I was just a little unsure of what we were talking about with the signage backup to be provided and some of the other things that we've discussed. So maybe what I need to do is come back and talk to you individually to straighten out my understanding of what we're going through. So, and I would prefer to do that than hold up the whole desk here, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other public comment? Okay, we are on number nine. So I guess if we want to go forward this, we would need a motion and a second to create a resolution to allow this?
You wouldn't need a motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution to address this and bring it back to you next month.
Okay, so the concept is when you're going to school that has something to do with city business because you're trying to improve their self and it's okayed by the city, then we can pay mileage?
Well, there's, there's different policies. So you have a training policy. So if, if you're going to a, a training that the city is sending you to, like for example, Main Street, Georgina went to the Main Street conference. That was official city business. She was going there, she was, she could either take a city car or she could be reimbursed for her mileage. Different things. Me getting my city clerk certification 100 years ago, it feels like. You know, Michelle's going through that right now. So these are official city business things that we are sending people to, to get training in things. The problem is that policy is separate than the education fund policy, which specifically excludes travel expense. That's where I'm conflicted because I can't say that I'm approving this without council's support because I don't have a policy that I could fall back on to say, this is why I authorized this expense. So it's, it's got to be at the direction of council if you want to change that.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So let me just understand, and I'll get off the court, Georgina. But let's say lieutenant wants to go and further his education to become a chief and have to take chief classes, but that's his, but it's not a requirement of his employment or it's, or this is just something he's choosing to do. Then he fall into that same education, like we would refund him if he goes to college and gets Chief 101? Yes. So, but then that would also open all employees to become reimbursed for the veteran, which I am always about, by the way. So I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding. Right, okay.
And, and the problem is because we have policies that allow for it that, again, quote, official city business, official city business. quote, official city business, official city business. And typically tuition, you know, me going to school and getting, you know, taking college classes and getting reimbursed through the education fund policy, I would not be eligible to receive travel for that. But I guess what I'm saying is Georgina's situation is a little different than that because if Shane's going to chief school at night to be a chief and Shane's salary has not been reduced by what we are reimbursing him for those classes where Georgina's has. And so that's why I was, you know, recommending giving consideration to that if you're going to do the mileage reimbursement, but then Andrew said it needs to actually be a policy amendment. Does that make sense?
Yep. Okay. So Andrew, as far as, yeah, let me finish my question. And then you may have. Andrew, where we're going with this is, is part of the terms of Georgina's employment, there appears to have been an agreement. Is it verbal or is it written?
Written. So she has a written conditional offer and it does not state in the writ conditional offer that it is a condition of her employment to obtain this degree.
Doesn't say that.
Okay.
No. Because she met the minimum requirements of the job description because she has a degree in public administration.
Okay.
It was just the council's desire for her to obtain that degree if she came on board. It was just a desire that was expressed of the council at the time. And she agreed to do that and to accept tuition reimbursement in lieu of salary. So where Shane takes a college class, Shane still gets paid what Shane gets paid, what's in the budget for his salary. If Georgina goes and takes a class, it essentially is coming out of her salary because she's taking salary, tuition reimbursement in lieu of.
All right, let me, a direct question to Andrew because I think this is more of a legal thing. Georgina was hired with the understanding that she's going to be paid X amount of dollars, but if she goes and takes classes, she'll be reimbursed as a compensation for taking X amount of dollars. So therefore, Mandy is stating because the condition of employment included these agreements, that it is now city business. It's part of city business because that is the condition of your employment. It's not-
That's not what I'm saying.
It's kind of like what seems, which now, you know, makes it, well, how, how does it, how does it become city business?
I'm not saying it does become city business. I'm just saying if you were going to give consideration to something, the fact that her conditional offer, and I can tell you exactly how what it says, let me just pull All right. Georgina, as a salaried employee with the city of Dunellen, you will be an exempt employee as this is a department head position that qualifies under FALC rules. Therefore, you will not be eligible for overtime. Your annual salary will be $56,300. As we discussed, the city agrees to cover tuition expenses in accordance with personnel manual, Article III, Section 2, education fund policy, in an amount not to exceed $6,660 fiscal year 2022 for courses taken to obtain your master degree of urban and regional planning. Attach as a proposed salary tuition plan that will be conditional upon the city council approving the same in future budgets. So that first year when she came on, we had $64,000 budgeted for that position. She's saying, she's, she did her research as far as her courses and gave me a number of $6,660, which re, which reduced that $64,000 because we could only afford $64,000, that's what we had in the budget. And so between her, her education reimbursement through the policy and her salary, that would total the $64,000.
Oh, okay. So I think the comparison and Lieutenant, sorry to use you, but somehow you've gotten-
Sorry, Dave.
If Lieutenant Yax, on his own, without any condition of employment, wanted to take additional courses in police work, he could do that on his own and it would be totally up to him to do that. The city would have nothing to do with that if he wanted to do that.
But he could get money paid back.
But this is a different story that part of her employment was conditional on her doing that. Correct?
You can interpret it that way, but it is not spelled out anywhere.
Okay. In other words, what, I don't think what any of us want to do is anybody within the city that starts going to classes is automatically going to be asking for compensation for traveling expenses even though the city is not asking part of it. They're just deciding to do it for self-improvement.
I'd like to make comment, please.
Yeah, yeah, we, this is, we need to get this clarified, otherwise anybody would take, if Jan wanted to go back and take more accounting classes at the university, or she can say, well, no one told me to do that, but I want to do that because I want to-
Well, it also has to be approved through the budget process too. If a, if a, if an individual wants to go back to school and get reimbursed their tuition expenses, it has to go through the budget process. It has, that expense has to be approved and then the, it has to be authorized by the department head. I can't just go start taking-
I understand that. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about travel expenses. I'm not talking about tuition.
Oh. So like I said, the travel or the commission policy, which is what is written into the conditional offer, excludes travel.
I'd like to say that I think we should get off this merry-go-round. And I think what Mandy is saying has just said that this is going to be a case-by-case decision through council. And here's the way I feel about this and why I brought this up in the first place. Our employees are, should be regarded as an investment for this city. And the more educated they are, the certifications they have, what does that do for Dunellen? It tells other people who are coming here to invest that we have professionals with the degrees to get the job done. The other thing is about, is about the age of our employees. Michelle, Gina, they're young. I think if we make it known to these young people that have joined our, I like to use the word team here, that they are not just appreciated, but we're concerned about how they can improve their professionalism. They're just about dollars and cents. I'm not going to be here forever. I hope that these younger people do go ahead and advance their education so that when I leave my role as a councilperson and pass it on to the next council, that we have people here that are gaining experience and that means educational experience also. That's what businesses do.
Ms. Covic, yes, and I think if we were making a vote on what your statement just was, it would be unanimous. What we're talking about, we have language that says you can't do this. And we're trying to figure out how we can do this with the language.
We can't agree if we put a motion resolution to give staff construction to come up with a resolution. And our attorney just said that that's proper procedure. It is not.
Yes, yes, there's, there's really two options I think the council has, and there's a procedure that's spelled out in education fund policy for approval of certain, certain expenses.
Mandy? I have a question for Andrew. If the council were to make a motion deeming that they consider this a qualified business expense for official city business and authorize mileage reimbursement, would, would that be problematic?
Potentially, because this policy is, is, first of all, it's referenced directly within, within the contract. Second of all, it's very clear that this is travel-related expense. It's, it's exactly what the policy is contemplating, anything else aside. So I, I think the two options council consider, if you wanted to change the policy, the policy can be changed. You can place a limit so people aren't taking courses in Nebraska or California, you know, within a certain area or a certain amount of travel policy. So it doesn't, so the city has some understanding of what the maximum could be. The only other option that I can think of, if you want it to pertain only to one specific individual, is simply to raise their salary to cover those expenses.
But I was just saying, when is her evaluation?
This month? It's September.
So you've been on board here now?
Was she my child?
Geez.
I don't remember.
Yeah, I got that part.
Okay, I, I think we, we really have our arms around it. I, I understand it, so staff's looking for direction from us, where to go with this.
I mean, I do like Andrew's suggestion, I mean, to keep it, you know, within a policy that can be enforced and you just put some limitations on it.
Mileage.
Not to exceed, you know, a certain amount or not to exceed a certain number of miles or something like that.
That's sensible. That makes sense.
Okay. Good, Andrew. All right.
So can you bring that back to us?
Sure. We can have something for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that's a good way of doing it. Okay. Excellent. We go to number 10. This is the Resolution 2022-08, the new general fund reserve. Can we get a description of that before we have, have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is the resolution brought back before USU requested to establish a new reserve for designating funds to be set aside to help contribute to the new police facility. Those funds consist of 1% sales tax monies that have been earmarked every year for the past couple of years in the amount of $365,000 towards the new facility, as well as the balance of the proceeds from the sale of Soul Harbor Church in the amount of $241,788 for a total reserve balance of $600, $606,788. Recognizing that any monies that we spend going forward, such as on McKinley-Horn Concept, would come from these funds and be drawn down, you know, as used.
Hey, very good. Do we have any public comment on this? No public comment. Okay. Can we have a motion?
I'm a Resolution RES 2022-08, be read by title only.
Mandy, would you please read?
I need a second to vote.
I'll second that.
Second? Okay.
Aye.
Oh, yeah. You don't read?
Now, now can the, everybody votes?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Resolution number RES 2022-08. Resolution of the City of Dunellen, Designating Funds Deposited to the General Fund from the sale of Soul Harbor Church, less the amount paid for the purchase of Tower Road property, $241,788, and funds from the 1% discretionary sales tax, sales surtax reserve in the amount of $365,000, establishing a general fund capital improvement reserve titled new police facility in the amount of $606,788, providing an effective date.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'm a Resolution RES 2022-08, be approved.
We have a second?
Aye.
Okay, discussion, I just have one, one comment. I would like to have a clear understanding that this money that is earmarked for the police station slash project, that any expenses that are coming up that are related to this project come from this fund?
Absolutely. If there's consensus, I can bring forward it with an accounting as, as those expenses incur and letting the balance remain. However, you'd like me to report on that. It could be a quarterly financial update where I talk about reserves.
So does that, does that wordage have to be in this resolution?
No. I do that with other reserves that we have on here. I don't think it needs to be, but that's entirely up to you. For example, when one cent sales tax money is budgeted, I just draw that down as the items are purchased.
Could it not just be very easily to have in the resolution? Any, any additional expenses come from this fund?
We don't have, I mean-
It could. It, we could. It's, it's not required, but we could.
We know we have architects and all this other stuff coming up, so I just want to make sure that we're, we're not trying to fund that outside of this.
Well, and this reserve would act like any other reserves, such as your one cent sales tax or your gas tax, that when an item is earmarked for the police facility, it's automatically going to come from this reserve.
Okay, so it's-
And that's how I would treat it, not like any other reserve we have on hand.
Okay, very good. Any additional discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post passes unanimously. We go to number 11, Resolution 2022-15, Council Code of Conduct. I think, Andrew, this is probably yours to describe.
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to speak to it per direction of the city council at the last workshop. These are the edits, proposed edits made to the city council code of conduct. You'll find them in Exhibit A of the adopting resolution for your consideration. If you go down to page five of that attachment, you'll see the first set of strike through and underlined, and this just includes an addition. There are, there are two, there were two pertinent sections within this, within this document. The first on page five, the second on page 14. So what you see in this new language is the addition that sets that specific denotation on conducting official city business and that endorsement and campaigning should not occur during city meetings. And then the second sentence there is adopted from that other paragraph. And we can jump over there. Mandy, that's on page 14?
14.
Yes. And you'll see out there, it's just stuck through. The language is very similar. It was added on that second sentence as the, the language in 14, but it was adopted slightly just to be stated in conjunction with the, with the other paragraph synced a little better. But in any case, the language on page five, the addition, this deletion is just simply stating summarily that city council members may participate in elections, they may campaign and may endorse other candidates, whether they be city council candidates or other board or commission candidates. In the city, you don't have any other elected positions, they're all appointments, so at this time it doesn't apply. But any other board, I suppose somebody may campaign for an appointment. But that's what this does. Just simply states that, that you all as council members, future council members may participate, just not while conducting city business.
Thank you very much.
Just a real quick clarification. Does that mean, like, if I'm at, if I'm over at the Chamber of Commerce, that I would not campaign for, vote for Donald Duck?
Well, if there's a meeting over at-
I mean, if I'm, if I'm in a, my, the city liaison.
If at that time you're conducting official city business in your role as, as council member liaison, then per this policy.
Okay.
See, since it's not a public meeting and the council, really the, the regulations are, are set for council meetings and that's where you have the most control, there may be some First Amendment issues there. But again, this is by all intents and purposes, for the most part, an aspirational document that does have some issues with enforceability throughout the document.
Right.
So what I would tell you, or tell any council member is per this document- So what I would tell you, or tell any council member is per this document, per this change, that no while as a liaison should not be. It should be when you're not wearing your city council hat. And I would advise that's how to think of it.
Okay.
If you, if the, the city council cap, cap is on in any way at all, then I would stay away from, I would recommend staying away from supporting any candidates.
Thank you.
This is a very good clarification. Okay, we have any public comment on item number 11? This is to clarify what council members can do and can't do during elections. Okay. No public comment?
I can't work, I'm like you. That's more than that one.
That'd be weird.
Okay, we have, can we have a motion?
So moved.
This is Resolution 2020-15. We have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post passes unanimously. Mandy, you want to read this?
Resolution number RES 2022-15, a resolution of the City of Danellen, amending the City Council Code of Conduct Regarding Council Member Endorsement and Campaigning for Council Candidates, Providing Perseverability, Conflicts, and an Effective Date.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have a, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post passes unanimously. Okay, we go to number 12. Resolution 2022-07, Amending the Blue Run Park Management Plan. Andrew, would you get us up to speed on what this is all about?
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to speak to this one as well and, and the one that follows, actually. So this is the plan amendment that has gone out to, you've seen this before, at least in a review capacity, and this is the plan amendment that's gone out to Marion County, the Office of Greenways and Trails, as well as FCT for feedback and comment, and then the organizations have objected or provided any, any written objections to council's adoption of this amendment to the plan. What the amendments entail, you will find those in Section 2 and Section 3 of this particular resolution. In Section 2, there is additional language added to the plan that requires visible signage on the KB Hole Park Shuttle from the less than 50 feet away, so a minimum of five inches in height. That language was taken from the county's contract with their contractor, where they actually do require that. And so that was integrated into the plan, as I described previously. And then in Section 3, you will see that there is additional language protecting the nature trails and some regulations regarding provision of low-impact recreational passage. Specifically, there's a prohibition on bulky or heavy equipment, prohibited on the nature trails with certain exceptions, such as equipment necessary for ADA compliance or those with disabilities, equipment utilized for administrative purposes, whether that be by the city, the county, or any other agency that may have jurisdiction within the park, and equipment which must be allowed under state or federal law, that's your catch-all for any kind of preemption, as well as fishing poles, since fishing is permitted in the pond. And that's, that's it for this one. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, if I can.
Okay. Attorney Hand went over what this resolution entails as far as Blue Run Park. Is there anyone in the comments that would like to make a comment on this before a motion is made? No comments? All right, we have a, a propose, we need a motion for Resolution 2022-07 to be read by title only. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Williams, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Henshaw. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? None passes unanimously. Ms. Sodam, would you read it, please?
Resolution number RES 2022-07, a resolution of the City of Danellen, amending the Blue Run of Danellen Park Management Plan as specified herein, providing for severability, conflict, and effective date.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Second by Ms. coverage. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post passes unanimously. One question before you do the public hearing statement. This, this is, this is a resolution that will eventually evolve into an ordinance change?
So the resolution, the, it seems a bit odd that you have the governing document being adopted by resolution and then the actual legislation adopted by ordinance, but the original plan was adopted by resolution, so that's the method that we go through to change that. So what this does is it simply puts it in the plan. It's the requirement that the city, city's ordinances match up to the plan. So the, the next step, the ordinance that we'll review and that I'll address incorporates that into the city's code. The resolution simply incorporate, incorporates it into the management plan itself.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Sodam, I believe you have something to read now?
Yes, sir. All persons wishing to address the City Council will be asked to limit their comments to a specific subject being addressed. Public opinions and input are valued by the council. However, it is requested that comments are directed at specific issues rather than personal comments directed toward the council members or staff in order to foster mutual respect between council members and the public. Members of the public in attendance at public forums should listen courteously and attentively to all public discussions before the body and focus on the business at hand. They shall refrain from interrupting other speakers, making personal comments not germane to the business of the body, or otherwise interfering with the orderly conduct of meeting. Members of the public addressing City Council and boards or commissions on a specific project or proposal are requested to disclose any personal interest or relationship and any business, professional, or financial interest with any individual, group, project, or proposal regarding the subject matter under review. Members of the public should always err on the side of more public disclosure, not less, in order to provide integrity to the public process.
All right, at this time, is there any public comment?
Mayor, you need to open the public hearing first.
I'll open that up?
Yes, please.
Okay. On number 13. Okay, got you. Ordinance 2022-09, the Blue Run Park Rules and Regulations Posted on July 6th. Agenda, item number 13. It is now 7:50 PM, and I close the regular meeting and open the public hearing to discuss ordinance 2022-09, Blue Run Park Rules and Regulations Posted on the city's website on July 6, 2022, and advertised in the Republican News on September 2, 2022. So we go to staff comment now?
Yes.
Okay.
So Andrew would be able to speak to this one as well?
Okay.
Yes, Mayor, and this one, this lang, this, as I explained just a moment ago, this ordinance incorporates the changes the city council just made to the Blue Run Park Management Plan. The language is identical, dealing with bulky and heavy equipment, as well as allowing for those few exceptions and requiring vehicular signage on the shuttle.
Okay. Do we have public comment on this? No public comment? It is now 8:51 PM, and I close the public hearing held to discuss ordinance...
About 7:00.
7:00.
Oh, sorry. 7:51. Ordinance 2022-09, and reopen the September 12 City Council Meeting. So now we move on to agenda item number 14, final reading of ordinance 2022-09. Do we have any description on that before we go to public comment?
This motion is to have it read by title only. You just took public comment during the public hearing.
Okay. All right. So on item number 14, is there a motion to read by title only?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second. However, with Mrs. coverage, we can move.
Okay. Any discussion?
You still have a quorum. Andrew, do they need to wait for her to return to take a vote?
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Mandy?
Ordinance number ORD 2022-09, an ordinance of the City of Danellen, Florida, amending Chapter 46 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Danellen, amending Article 1 of Chapter 46, creating Article 3, Blue Run Park, establishing rules and regulations for Blue Run Park via ordinance, establishing fines for violations, establishing the appeal process, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for complication, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion was by Vice Mayor, seconded by Ms. Williams. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? None passes unanimously. Okay, we are going to item number 15.
Oh, now she's going to podium.
Yeah, this is the public hearing procedure for tentative millage and budgets. Hey, Jana, do I turn this over to you at this time?
You have a script, Mr. Mayor, that you need to read.
Okay.
And it needs to be read, read verbatim.
Okay, all right. I got it. Agenda item number 15. The mayor should read the following required statement. This is a public hearing on the tentative proposed millage rate and tentative budget for the City of Danellen for the 2022-2023 budget year. Tentative millage rate for the City of Danellen is 6.300, which is 3.43% greater than the rollback rate of 6.0912. The tentative budget is proposed at $4,772,572. It is now 8:755 PM, and I open the public hearing for staff to first make a presentation and then to anyone wishing to address the City Council on either the proposed millage rate 2022-2023 budget. I will first call upon staff to make a presentation as to the millage rate and the budget. I will now, so I do that now? So that's...
That's, it, it's my turn.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first step in approving a budget for the next fiscal year. I'm going to go over the current fiscal year and some budget highlights, as well as talk about next year. An honorable mayor, city council, and residents pursuant to our city charter, the proposed budget for fiscal year 2223 is submitted for review and adoption by city council. I do prepare two documents that you can use in conjunction with reviewing the budget. The first is a proposed budget summary. It provides a line item review of multiple prior fiscal year actuals and, as well as the current year budget, and this is all as of May 31st, and as well as the projected year end. This document is designed to provide the reader the opportunity to make a comparison between fiscal year 2122 and our proposed budget for next year. The second document is the detailed line item budget, and that provides individual amounts that make up the total of each line item, so you can see what the departments have requested. These two documents combined represent the city's plan for the upcoming fiscal year. The current year budget highlights, transfers in from reserves are projected to come in under budget primarily due to capital projects advancing to the new fiscal year. These projects are the new police facility, $365,000, continuation of the city's stormwater asset mapping project, $118,000. I'm going to go ahead and round. This is a match for a grant from Swift Mud and the city's responsible for 50% of the cost of the project, and replacement of city hall carpet and flooring, $32,000. Revenue is projected to come in over budget primarily due to the grant proceeds for the ARPA grant, approximately $460,000. Expenses for the current year are projected to be under by about $516,000. And again, it's primarily due to these capital projects that are advancing to the new fiscal year. The net effect to the overall general fund budget is a projected surplus of $789,000 that will be deposited at year-end into the reserves, subject to the year-end audit. And restricted grant reserve, $460,000, which is the ARPA grant proceeds, $15,642 to be reserved for capital expenditures, and this is per the city's fund balance policy. And then $313,000 is the general fund unrestricted reserves, and these are the proceeds from the sale of Soul's Harbor Church. With the adoption of, the approval of this new resolution, that $313,000 will actually be moved out of unrestricted into the new police facility reserve. The general fund budget has been successfully managed for the past seven consecutive years without needing to draw from reserves for operating costs. As of June 30, general fund cash on hand is approximately $6.8 million. These funds are allocated among different varying reserves with varying restrictions as to when and how they are used, either by council or by state statute. Accomplishments for this current fiscal year, and I'm just going to highlight some major ones, repaving of Cedar and Ohio Streets, $443,000. Mockingbird and Moon Cove Drive Intersection Rehabilitation, $209,000. A GIS mapping system to assess the condition of the city roads, that was 100% grant-funded. The sale of Soul's Harbor Church. Rosen Streets received a new one-time pickup truck. We assisted the DCBA with their discovered Danellen website. We also completed Phase 1 of the mandatory minimum wage adjustment, and that was approximately $17,000. And another major accomplishment is the implementation of the city volunteer program. The volunteers over the past 10 months completed the following. City Hall beautification, West Pennsylvania holly tree mulching, weeding, trimming, Ernie Mills Park beautification. They stained Blue Run Park benches, along with Rainbow River Conservation, and the city beach cleanup with one rake at a time. Moving on to the tax increment financing district that is the CRA. Expenses, the funding reserved and set aside for grants to residential and commercial property owners was $100,000. Applications in the amount of $19,000 have been received and processed. In an effort to spur greater participation in this program, the CRA board decided to focus on a specific area to have a greater impact, and currently that area focuses the historic district. On February 11, 2019, city council moved to authorize Marion County to commence with the Blue Run Park restroom project in accordance with the management plan. Originally, the CRA board committed approximately $30,000 that has since been increased to a total commitment of $175,000 toward this project, which is budgeted in the next fiscal year. And the 125th anniversary park project has been canceled. Grant funding with DOT in the amount of $2.5 million for the multimodal enhancement project along County Road 484 has been awarded, and the project is anticipated to begin next fiscal year. The city has committed a total of $350,000 as a local match to help fund this project. Moving on to the new budget that is proposed tonight. Moving on to the new budget that is proposed tonight, we have decreased the millage rate from 6.5 mils to 6.3. The 6.3 millage rate is 3.43% greater than the rollback rate of 6.0912 mils. Overall, city property values have increased approximately 8%, and we will realize an increase of $78,000 in math along proceeds as a result of the property value increase. The proposed millage rate that was certified, excuse me, back in July was 7 mils, and this was approved July 14th. However, the budget is balanced at 6.3 mils without utilizing reserves to offset operational costs. We held budget workshops July 20th and August 22nd, and there are two public hearings to adopt the budget, the first one being tonight, and the second, the second and final one is on September 26 at 5:30. Next year in the general fund, the proposed operating budget is $4,772,572, and it consists of personnel expenses equating to 31.9% of that budget, operating expenses 21.7%, capital expenses make up the largest portion at 41.1%, debt service 3.7%, and approximately 1.6% of the budget will be retained and deposited into restricted capital reserves, excuse me, at September 30, in compliance with the city's bond balance policy. Expenses have increased over this current fiscal year by about $620,000 primarily due to capital expenditures associated with the new police facility and the grant-funded stormwater infrastructure improvements. Both staff and city council are committed to continue the pursuit of additional revenue opportunities and reducing expenses in an effort to enhance the general fund, and one such program in the new fiscal year, the city will pursue a boat launch program to help offset expenditures here at the city boat land. Moving on to the CRA, the TIF, the proposed budget is $695,729, an 11% increase over fiscal year 2122. The budget is made up primarily of personnel expenses at 12%, operating expenses 6.6%, capital expenses 72.4%, and grants and aid 8.9%. Projects funded in the proposed budget, of course, the restroom facility at Blue Run Park, wayfinding signage, city hall digital sign is included in this budget, East Pennsylvania Avenue's Cedar Street and city hall solar lighting, and new permitting and code enforcement software. Other highlights overall for the entire city, there's a new part-time police officer, a new full-time public works supervisor, I'm sorry, surface worker.
Surprise Troy!
Those who old and then replaced.
What do I just bring on? A much-needed financial system software upgrade. We are about five years behind, and that will cost the city $12,000 to make up for those years, but we anticipate major improvements. There's a public works, there's public works vehicle replacement, two vehicles, at $113,000. The boat launch program implementation is $14,000. There's a vehicle replacement for the police department, $50,000. There is a grant from FDLE, it's a justice assistance grant, in the amount of $8,700 for three laptop computers, and the city matches are required. Stormwater infrastructure projects using the ARPA grant proceeds, $899,000, and Phase 2 of the mandatory wage adjustment to comply with the state of Florida minimum wage increase. This budget has been prepared with input from all departments, councils' participation, guidance, and overall support of staff's efforts are greatly appreciated, and this does conclude my presentation on the current year and next year.
Thanks, Jan.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I will now call on members of the public wishing to address the city council on either the proposed millage rate or budget. So here's your opportunity to make any comments on the proposed millage rate of 6.3 or anything within the budget you would like to make a comment on. Okay, no one in attendance to make a comment? Now I ask for any council discussion on the 2022-2023 budget. Any comments?
I'll just say that, again, thank you to staff for working diligently. I think this is a nice, I think this is a nice clean budget that y'all have presented to us, and that we have all worked on, and I really can't think of much more that we can say except thank y'all for always doing your jobs that really making our jobs a lot easier because of professionalism on each department, except Deator, you've been apparently replaced.
How's Mattel?
Okay, Jan, I just have a couple loose ends here. We had talked about it, and you had talked about maybe making a quarterly, quarterly report to council in the event if this budget, if a, if a department head had used the funding in a way that was different than what was approved by council, that we would be given notification of that.
Yes, if council would like me to report on any line item transfers, Mandy has the authority to transfer between line items within the general fund for items that come up during the year. However, and that's all documented within our financial system via budget transfer form, and if the department head is requesting that, they have to provide justification as well as support documentation, such as...
Jan needed a chair.
I needed a chair. So Mandy, Mandy had funds available that she knew she wasn't going to use in her education budget, and so that was transferred to my department so I could purchase an ergonomically correct chair. So very small purchase. So what I can do if council deems it necessary, now those, these transfers are few and far between during the year, but when they do happen, I can give a report if it's something that, under Mandy's purview, if it's something such as, like payroll dollars. Payroll dollars should be used for personal expenses, but if there's a major need, I can't give you, let's just say, and this is just an arbitrary, I have, let's say a single, and Troy needs some money. So we could come to council, and if there are payroll dollars available due to a vacancy, you know, or a position that hasn't been filled, it would be up to council to say, okay, transfer those dollars, or it comes from reserves. So there are times where we will definitely come to you prior to a line item transfer, and then other times, I can just give you an update.
Yes, that's what, I, I think it's a realistic and reasonable request, that if money that we have budgeted that is supposed to be spent specifically for a certain thing, if it's used other than that, council should be totally happy with it, right? So if you can do that anyway, I feel comfortable.
And I won't say that for a quarterly update, I'll do that as it occurs, like at the next meeting, in the department head report.
Okay. Within the budget, one of the items that we're focusing on is the putting a rope fence around the parking lot here. I see there's $10,000 appropriated for that. Have we checked that out to make sure that's enough money to do that properly?
How was it first, Troy?
When we originally looked at the project, we figured we can get it in for about $6,000 to $8,000. I requested that Jan put $10,000 in the budget to give us a little bit of a contingency. So I'm pretty confident we'll have a rope fence for...
So let's say it comes out to be $13,000, what happens?
That's when I come to council and, and say I have a little bit of extra money from coal patch that I won't be using this year, and I want to transfer it to my rope fence project.
And we go back to my first question, is how we use money other than what it was...
That's right, but no, if I need an adjustment because it is a capital project, it's, that's easy enough for council to...
Because I'm just wondering to put these posts in, and I know where it's been done, I don't know how much it costs, with that big, thick harbor-type rope, which really gives it that wow look, I'm just hoping $10,000 does that. What I would hope, if it is successful here and looks the part, we'd also consider in future years for our other parking lots too, sort of, that's kind of like our brand, where you see that, you know, that city parking, so I think they would really look great in the accessory lot and at the Soul Harbor Church lot, you know, in a future budget if it works out here. So, second thing I want to ask is one of your favorite subjects, did we put in the budget the expenses that may be necessary to fix the fountain where it doesn't, where it's usable for more than a few months at a time?
Well, I've been trying to keep this from council, but hopefully the fountain will be running in the next two to three weeks. We have a contractor lined up, working out the details with him now to have it finished. Now, whether that happens, I don't know, but right now the price is about $2,000. So even though we didn't budget it specifically, because it's not a capital thing that I can just put a big number in, it can be absorbed into operating. However, it should be done before October 1.
Okay, because I'm going by what you told me, at one time you said it might be $3,000 or $4,000 to do.
That's right.
So I just want to make sure...
The next closest price we got for it several years ago was about $4,000.
So what happens if it turns out to be $4,000?
It's not. The contractor's already given me a quote and is going through the process now of being approved as a vendor, and we're trying to figure out how to get him to come to work without any money upfront. That's one of our issues with the contractor, the agreement right now, is he wants a little bit upfront.
Another thing that I think is really needed, and is going to be needed as we go further, is we need a kayak launch here at city hall. Right now, we have a lot of activity because commercial vendors are using, they're using, they're coming off the side of the bank, they're eroding the bank, they're getting into areas, and this is just not the commercial, it's other people, they're into the areas where the pontoon boats are launching and whatever, it's a dangerous situation. So we actually need, you showed me where you would want to do it, as you're facing the dock, it'd be to the right of the dock. So is there anything in this budget that we can build a kayak launch?
No, the first quote, and it's not an official, it was just a project summary to see what kind of numbers we were looking at, just for the launch itself was $25,000. And not having, or not knowing what a total project cost would be, I did not try to budget numbers in there for it, but that is on the top too, except, or directed by council to look for T-Mobile grant applications.
Because I really think this is, especially if we start charging fees and whatever, we're really going to need this. If nothing else, it's a safety issue on a very busy summer day, you have kayaks coming and going, and no one knows where to put in, no one knows where to get out, it's, it's dangerous, so we need to have that area identified. Yes, Jan?
And we could always do a budget amendment during the year to bring this project into the budget from either a capital fund or your unrestricted reserve, or we just wait until the end of next year to see if a budget amendment is truly needed. Budget amendments are only required by statute if we overspend our, our general fund budget. So it may be that we can absorb that cost just overall with combination of the other departments from under statute, so it would be, your flexibility is definitely built into the budget.
Andrew, would, if our ramp fee turned out to be successful and was a good revenue stream, could the revenue from the boat ramp fee be used to build a kayak launch dock?
Yes.
So that's...
There's a logical link there because it services voters and so forth.
All right, so that's, that's a good idea. And then the last question I have toward the police, they're asking for a part-time officer. It was described to council originally that this officer was going to be, this money was going to be used to pay for river patrol chief? Is that what you had in mind?
Well, during the winter time...
Come on up to, because I may have some follow-up questions on this one.
I would still like to use as part-time person on the river, because we have been successful this year on the river. He only works 36 hours. What time he does not spend on the river, he will be for traffic, unless we have a hurricane or emergency, then he would be used for patrol, but his two main jobs would be the river and traffic.
And if we do implement the boat ramp fees and need for parking enforcement, there could be something else that possibly you'd have some extra manpower to do, do that?
Yes, sir.
Right?
We have the manpower now, as long as we stay where we're at.
Yeah, well, I do have to say to you while we have you up at the podium, that the number of complaints that I have received this summer in relation to the use of the river, river has just dropped off the edge of a cliff. I mean, I was getting peppered all the time, but why aren't you doing this, why aren't you doing that? And I'm telling you what, it has changed from night and day with the patrols, and I think our Blue Run Park ordinance helped a lot with that too, kind of cut down some of the activity. So we want to fund you and keep this program going, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Very good. With that said, that's the end of my questions, comments. Anybody else have anything else? Okay. It is now 8:20 PM, and I close the public hearing held to discuss the proposed millage rate in the 2022-23 budget. We move now to item number 16, Resolution 2022-10. Is there a motion to read Resolution 2022-10 into the record?
Read Resolution 2022-10, you read it into the record.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Mandy, do you read? No?
Resolution number RES 2022-10, City of Denellin, a resolution tentatively setting tax millage for the year 2022, whereas the city council for the City of Denellin met on September 12, 2022, at 5:30 PM at City Hall 20750 River Drive, Denellin, Florida, 34431, to consider the tentative amount of tax millage to be collected on all real and personal property in the City of Denellin, Florida for the year 2022. And whereas the city council has determined the tentative millage on all real and personal properties in the City of Denellin shall be set at 6.3 mils, which is 3.43% greater than the rollback rate of 6.0912 mils. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council for the City of Denellin, Florida, that the tax millage on all real and personal properties in the City of Denellin for the year 2022 is tentatively set at 6.3 mils duly adopted by the city council at a regular meeting held on the 12th day of September 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Odom. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-10, setting the tentative millage rate at 6.30 for 2022-23?
I move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. For the record, the tentative millage rate now adopted by the city council is 3.43% greater than the rollback rate of 6.0912. We now move on to agenda item number 17, Resolution 2022-11. Is there a motion to read Resolution 2022-11 into the record?
Can I just ask a question more quick? So my paper says accept public comment, because we have a public meeting, is that the public comment? That would be...
Not quite following?
It says accept public comment, so before we vote, we need to accept public comment?
Public comment needs to be taken, yes, at some point during the, whether, before it's read or after it's read by title.
Aye.
Okay. So is there a motion to read Resolution 2022-11 into the record?
Yes, sir.
Second?
I mean...
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Mandy?
Resolution number RES 2022-11, City of Danellen, a resolution adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year 2022-23, whereas the city council for the City of Danellen met on September 12th, 2022, at 5:30 PM at City Hall 20750 River Drive, Danellen, Florida, 34431, to consider the adoption of tentative budget for the fiscal year 2022-23. And whereas the city council for the City of Danellen has determined that budget will be $4,772,572 for the City of Danellen. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council for the City of Danellen, Florida, that the budget for the City of Danellen has been tentatively set $4,772,572, duly adopted by the city council at a regular meeting held on the 12th day of September 2022.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-11, setting the tentative general fund budget to $4,772,572 for the City of Danellen as proposed for the 2022-23 fiscal year?
The mayor just did need to take public comment before the main motion.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Attorney Henry. Is there any public comment before we break this motion? Please note, public was offered opportunity, no comment was made, so I will reread it again. Is there a motion to, Resolution 2022-11, setting the tentative general fund budget in the amount of $4,772,572 for the City of Danellen as proposed for the 2022-2023 fiscal year?
I don't know who.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Williams, second. Vice mayor made the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Congratulations. Okay, we move to agenda item number 18, which is the approval of the tax increment financing district budget.
Is that another comment before motion?
Do you want to describe what this is first, so public notes?
This, council, there is no resolution associated at this point with approving a tentative CRA budget. That will come at your next public hearing, the CRA board must approve the final adoption of the budget, and this is just approving the CRA budget for tentative for next fiscal year.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Smith. Is there any public comments on agenda item number 18? Please note, public comment was offered, there were none. Do we have a motion to move tentative 2022-2023 tax increment financing district budget in the amount of $695,729 to be approved as presented?
I don't know who.
Motion?
I'll second.
And seconded by Ms. Williams. Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously.
Just so I'm clear, who was the motion in second? Williams was first, I was second. Okay. We kind of both said it all at the same time.
Okay.
Thank you.
So far, an amazing, an amazing body of work by this council tonight. We go to number 19, this is council liaison reports and comments. Is there anyone still visiting with us that has a comment or want to say anything to us, get up to speed on anything? Mr. Arvo?
Yes.
Come on. Okay.
He's always big.
Very good. Anyone on the council have anything to say? Any reports?
No.
I mean, I'd be sorry, sorry. Good job tonight, sir.
Okay, and that takes care of that. Thank you. I'll write the state, I'll write the state down. City attorney reports.
No, mayor, just like the workshop, you'll have a number of projects coming before you that I will be working on, but for tonight, nothing specific.
Okay. Before we adjourn, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and hanging in with us. Very substantial meeting tonight, we have a motion to adjourn.
Sir?
Yes.
This is why I've seen...
Counsel, I'm sorry to have to sneak back up and make a comment or talk to council for a second, but earlier on agenda item, there were eight for the wayfinding signage and stuff, there were some questions about the quality between the two companies. Just want to recap, make sure I've got some information here that I said earlier, I want to make sure it's clear to council. Not knowing the quality from either of these two companies, I would like to have some time to do research on both of them, as it has just been brought to our attention that we're going to be expected to install these signs ourselves. So I want to make sure that we're meeting the DOT requirements, and if there's any manufacturing installations, that we change our decision in which company we order from. But also any permanent requirements or extra costs that may be implemented with it. So I will say that we'll plan on using the company that you guys have approved, but if we have any conflict with that, I'll be sure to bring back to council.
What you're doing is what council is expecting. If something is clearly better than the other, we want to know about it, so...
Well, that's, that's all I'm trying to say to council, is that I plan to do a little bit of program research, so, but if there's any conflict with it, I'll bring that back before council, before we're...
Is there a video page, this request?
I'm sure we can work out.
Okay, a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
And you think with every one you want to say?
I don't know what to say.
Maybe she's on the side, I believe, she spends a lot of time doing that.
I agree, I don't have anything else to say.
Yes, you did scare me there, but you did good.
I am glad you spoke to us.
You're getting rare, you're up there, you're everywhere.